We have a forum. I recall this meeting to water. Is there anyone present that would like to do an indication? Not seeing anyone, please let's have a room to sign. Please stand and join me in the place of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is special recommendations and presentation.
Yes, sir. And council, item four A, staff would like to table that item in 28th of May, 2019.
I will accept the motion to that, sir.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
We oppose that sign. Pass or refuse?
Second, sir. As you're well aware, we have technical issues with live broadcast tonight, so if I could ask council, are filming and recording, but if you could speak a little bit closer to your microphone, we're not able to get that on overhead speakers.
All right. That's fine, sir.
With that, the executive director of the Space Coast Transportation Organization, Ms. Jordianna Gillette, will provide a presentation on Space Coast Transportation and any organization. Welcome, Ms. Gillette.
Good evening, Ms. Gillette. How are you?
Thank you so very much. I'm so excited to have a few minutes to spend with you to tell a little bit about our organization. The Space Coast TPO is the body designated to develop transportation plans and coordinate state federal transportation funding. So, as you very well know, the American transportation system is very unique. Of course, we've got highways, which includes cars, bicycles, pedestrians, transit. We have Orlando International Airport, the FPC rail line. But what's very unique is that we have a spaceport and we have a seaport. And our economy is largely built on and around these transportation assets. And as you can see, this is a picture of all the different modes, and there is the beautiful Max Brewer Bridge at the very top that would represent the highway bridge components. The TPO's long-term highway priorities are determined by a few basic facts. The road is long, narrow, pre-population clusters, north and central and south, plus there's water. There's water everywhere. We have the beaches, Southern Island, and the mainland. We need to maintain intra-county connectivity. We only have three continuous north-south roads on five US1A1A. And east-west depends on seven pathways, so good mobility on these is critical to getting we together socially and economically. So the influence of each mode transcends jurisdictional boundaries. An example would be the road to Port leads to the need for beach line requirements. So someone needs to be looking at big picture. Portlanding a plan on the roads, and the TPO was created to do just that. Roads don't stop at city limits or county line. It usually doesn't care who owns the road. They just want to get to where they're going in reasonable, dependable time. So it's critical that we view transportation holistically and that we talk to each other about how to improve it. And the TPO is a core when those conversations can take place. But we also have to think regionally. Our market is larger than any single entity. We're part of the Orlando market area. We are dependent on Orlando, and they in turn rely on us. So we have several features here that are economic, as you can well know, in the Space Center, National Air Force Base, the beaches, and Port Penarol. And we need good regional connectivity for tourism, goods movement, and access to and from the Orlando market. And as you well know, we had a record-breaking 126,000 visitors that moved through Florida in 2018, and we certainly captured some of that here in the Bar County. And it's really just an integral part of our society and our economy locally. The Space Coast TPO is also a member of the Central Florida MP and Lian, which is a six MP or four along with that DOT. And we need quarterly. And one of the most significant things that we have done is create a regional priority list, projects that are of strategic importance for Florida, specifically for Bar County. Number one on that list is the future wide B of Ellis Road, which will connect to a new one on the five-year change. We actually have three new one on the five-year changes in construction here in Bar County. But also, in this area, we could be the Indian River Bridge, as we call that the NASA call site. We talk about a bridge to our nation's future in space, and so it is needed for like trade mobility and workforce access at the spaceport. And so we assisted Space Florida in applying for an infrastructure grant. And we are hopeful that we will find out in the coming months whether they receive that grant or not, or replacement of that bridge. And it is critically important for our area and for the region. So one of the main jobs of the TPO is to identify transportation budgets that we're going to need over the next 25 years, 20 to 25 years, and to work with DOT and our local governments to implement those improvements. My predecessor, Mr. Bob Kong, he used to say that the land needs the money. And that is so true because it's about projects, what are we doing in the Bar County for our citizens and our visitors. So we've picked up the development of our new 2045 long-range transportation plan. We think, oh, that's a long ways out there. But we are required to develop a long-range plan. We develop it every five years, and we will be developing our cost feasible plan next year. And we basically use a traveler land model to determine the future ability. And we have to balance the needs with funding available and, of course, the policy direction of the board. So it's really the framework for a common vision for the community's future transportation needs. And so we would ask everyone to take a survey, voice your vision for Bar.com, a lot of citizens here, and we would love to hear what you think we need for the Bar County. And so again, voice your vision for Bar.com. We'd love to hear your feedback. So we have to know what the problems are. So some of the tools that we use is the traffic count program, a crash database. We consider trends among all the different modes. And this is summarized in our annual State of the System report. This is just a printout from our State of the System report. Demographic trends show the third highest number of population growth since 2007. Traffic volumes have increased in correlation with population increase. And of course, the Orlando International Airport continues to see increasing trend in the number of passengers. 14.1% increase in cruise passengers from 2013 to 2017, 54.6% in cargo carriage from 2013 to 2017. Commercial space launches are now a constant part of life. And we've seen dramatic growth in aerospace technology, engineering sectors. So switching gears, quality of life projects are also extremely important. We're in the process of updating our bicycle pedestrian master plan. We have held six public meetings wanting to know what is important for the citizens of Bar County. And of course, the lanes, streets, ties, bicycles, pedestrians, and transit modes of travel. And there are streets that are designed to accommodate all users. And it's a good example of coordinating land use and transportation, mixed use communities. So here's just a few of the lanes streets that we've been involved in, that our TPO board has supported. And you know, there are projects that are going to save the economics and for the community. So safety is also an important part of the conversation. As you've probably heard, Florida is the most dangerous state for walking in the United States. And Bar County is not free in the country. And we really do ourselves a disservice when we get ranked at the top of these type of studies. So not only is it bad for our residents, because what our statistics have shown is, and it's the locals that are being healed, not the tourists, but you think about the visitor and tourist experience and their contribution to our economy, you know, the perception is, or the perception is. And it makes you wonder if they would want to come here and bring their families here for that type of statistic. So there is another piece, and that's the workers that support the industry have to be a part of the transportation compilation. And how are these workers getting to and from work? They are not typically employed, and they are often low-wage workers. And so we need to make sure that we're considering this when we identify projects and providing more transportation choices. In Bar County, we had 17 bicycle pedestrian deliveries in 2018. This year, we adopted a safety target of zero to reflect the DOT's goal of zero deaths, which means that we've taken a division zero approach that traffic deaths are preventable. And there's just things that you can do so that that doesn't happen. So it's going to take a three-pronged approach, engineering enforcement education. The Space Coast TPO has been strong in this for many years. But again, we felt like we might need the needle like we should. And so in July, we talked into our TPO governing board, a new safety program that we want to dive into. And we give our board's blessing on that, and we're formulating that right now. We will pull in all of our different local governments to help us with that. So we will keep this on my team as well. As we know, speed is part of that conversation, and managing it is very difficult. We know that if a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle traveling 20 miles per hour, nine out of 10 are going to survive. And if they're traveling 40 miles per hour, there's only going to be one possibly that survives. So this is a big piece of the puzzle. And the DOT is now finally taking very seriously and is looking at different ways to bring down the speed, because that's not something they do before, or they may be fit for so far. So I'm very hopeful and encouraged about that, because this is a serious problem. And so from an engineering perspective, federal highway has some prudent methods that DOT and our municipalities can use in their toolbox. You know, anytime we alter the structure of a roadway and change the driving patterns, we encounter resistance from the public. It's different. It's a change. Things like roundabouts, access management, road diets, unions, and pedestrian crossings, these are kind of dirty words sometimes when you're trying to change patterns. But these are some things that we are working on, start working on. So we're going to start changing the culture and, of course, the engineering techniques. And this is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, mid-block crossing. This is one of six along A1A. And of course, that is a very good location for it. It's a mincoast traffic across the road, near the beach. And there's more to come along A1A, south to 192. And we'll include 33 mid-block crossings and rectangular rapid flashing leans along A1A from Haneda all the way down to 192. That's sort of changed the field and context of that port. I realize that they're off course everywhere, and I know that right here in downtown Hillary Street, that no one turns a big fan of that one. And I don't understand that the DOT is not one of the good, I say, well, as they say, it's not one. But there are places where it makes sense, and maybe certainly it's that location where the motorists and the vehicles need to interact together. So we have bi-monthly coordination meetings with 321 Transit. I think that's an important part of transportation. We participate in transit studies to ensure that transit is considered in all roadway projects in way that we can have to standard PDA compliance. And we need to create a transportation network that complements land use existing in the future. We lack land use jurisdiction as a MPO, TPO. That's for the local governments. But we need to coordinate with jurisdictions to complement our leases and development into our long-range plan. Land use plans are only five-year plans, and in our business, transportation is 20-year plans. So the timelines don't match, but two of you can call me. It's something we will continue to be better at. And what a fantastic example of land use transportation in Land Use Titusville, and it has been a trail town. And we appreciate your leadership on that so much. The downtown area is the central connector of these regional trails, and it has provided excellent opportunities, including, I mean, welcome center, and talk about the tourism, what that's what we're doing in this area. And so, you know, perhaps it ends, and the reason why we're not building more is funding. We are constrained by our revenue. Last year was the 25th anniversary since the Federal Gas Act was raised back in 1993. Eighteen point four minutes for gallon has not changed in 36 years. Possibility of new news, we have construction and labor costs, and of course, water, fuel, and cars. So we're not giving some transportation cost. And then you throw in the electric vehicles, which is my understanding, legislature study leads based on 20%. But we have some concerns. And so this is a conversation to attack the health of the country, and let it pass it. It's how we're willing to continue on its path. It's newer than what's been on the table. And we just can't keep up. Purchasing power is 64% less than it was in 1993. And last slide, I would say, this is just a transportation plan to take away. I think most of our citizens do not realize just how expensive transportation costs are, how long it takes to implement. Please make sure of the improvements. And, you know, and there is a process to identifying and creating important projects. It takes the state by all and our local governments to be there, to be able to do this. And I just want to say that we appreciate your leadership so much. Mayor Johnson has been a very strong representative, positioned very well as a board. And so we appreciate Mr. Jordan being a new member as well. We look forward to accomplishing some good things for Bar County.
Any question on the count of ideas, Mr. ... On one of the slides, I don't know the name. Overall transit ridership continued to decrease after seeing record passenger increases pre-2013. Any ideas why that's happening?
Well, it's my understanding that at one time, it was, whenever the economy was not doing so well, you know, that was kind of a check there. What we are seeing is that there's something down, that the 20 and 21 people are still passing all their cars. So now we're not drawing a shot, but I think the economy is bothering them.
Okay. And you not have any influence on the hours or the buses?
Well, we do need to stay up. We do have to. That is something we're talking about. And we want to talk to the citizens that they're funding, and to make sure they're under pressure. And so that's a challenge for our W H D funding operations. Hopefully, we can reduce the construction. So it is something that's conversation.
I just had something mentioned in the center of the board, actually, I'm sure I can make it, that they really look at their employees, their low income, and the transportation incentives.
Here. Where are they located at?
I'm sorry?
Where are these folks located at?
In the North Bar. At actually Garden Street area.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you for what you do. This coordination is imperative to our success in this county. I thank you.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Member Nelson?
Again, thank you. I hate to add to your load, but there's two projects that I'm really concerned about. And of course, one is bike path leading out to the beach. And so I was sort of hoping you could bring us up to date on that and tell us maybe a date that it might get finished.
So you're talking about the Space Coast Loop, the trail going out to the beach?
Yeah, the one that goes out Garden Street to the beach and around.
Yes. So the project that's in the PD and E phase from Max Brewer out to the beach?
Okay.
That that project is finishing PD and E, and they are, the DOT is having their consultant move straight into design just for the east-west section. Originally, it was going to include not only the east-west section out to the beach, but also north-south up into Volusia. To get the east-west portion done sooner, they shifted some money, and the department is wanting to try to get some projects finished sooner. So they just shifted that and said, all right, east-west really should be the priority. And it seemed like that was fine with the Titusville folks as well. And then we'll focus on the north-south section. So design is funded, and they will be moving forward with that. The funding that was two years out for design, they are talking about switching that for construction, even though it may not be quite enough. So it may happen a lot sooner than we thought. So we're trying to understand. It hasn't happened in the work program yet, but that is what we're encouraging them to do.
Last play, 2022?
Something like that, yes.
That would be wonderful.
It would be wonderful. And again, it's not in the work program yet, but that conversation, I feel very optimistic about that.
I think Titusville would be very happy.
Yes, absolutely.
And then the other one project that I'd love to see sort of moved up maybe is South Street?
Your staff, Titusville staff, has submitted that to us, and so it will be going on our priority list. And we'll be talking to our board about that in July. And so certainly the traffic counts have really kind of spiked. So it's due. It's ready.
It's due.
And so the first phase would be the PD and E study. And so we will be putting that on our priority list and getting approved by our board in July. So it's, I think it's prime. It's ready to go.
We would love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Since I add to you a burden on a monthly basis, I want to thank you very much for taking your time and coming up to speak to us.
My pleasure.
And I also want to compliment you immensely on the job you do for the county.
Thank you, sir.
It's not an easy one. It's all-inclusive, and you have to make prognostications out into the next century sometimes, I think.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
But thank you for being with us.
My pleasure.
Next item, sir.
Yes, sir. Recently, staff has received numerous inquiries regarding tree preservation, mitigation, and clearing of property within the city. In response, staff has prepared a presentation outlining the city's regulations on preserving vegetation and clearing of property during development. And Trevor's here to provide that presentation to you.
Start with questions?
Yeah, technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties.
They're scrambling back there.
Yeah. All right. So as the city manager mentioned, we've been receiving several calls and some concerns from residents about clearing that's been associated with the land development that's been going on in the city here recently. And so this is just a very high-level overview of generally what the regulations are that are on the books for the city. And so this is just basically to provide a baseline level of understanding for you all, and hopefully if we need to clarify anything, we certainly can. So in general, there are two regulatory documents that control development within the city. The first is the comprehensive plan. In this case, the conservation element of the comprehensive plan is the document that discusses land clearing as part of development. And so the comprehensive plan is more general. It says things like it prevents the clear-cutting of land, those sorts of things. And then the land development regulations go on, and they actually establish the specific criteria that development has to meet. So they're the, sorry, the land development regulations are the document that actually specifies what types of trees have to be saved, those sorts of things. And so generally, our land development regulations specify any tree that is over 20 inches in diameter. So that's the, you know, not the circumference, but the diameter are considered to be specimen trees, and those are the trees that are supposed to be preserved during development. However, if those trees are to be removed for development, they have to be mitigated. Therefore, if they are taken out, they have to be compensated for in some way. There are three basic ways that's accomplished in the land development regulations. One is to replant additional new material. There is also the option to preserve other areas of the site, meaning they basically leave certain areas alone and leave the vegetation that's there. And the last resort, the third option, is to allow payment into the city's mitigation trust fund, or the public landscaping trust fund, which is, requires a payment of $100 per inch loss. So to put that in perspective, a 20-inch tree would be roughly $2,000 to pay for mitigation. Additionally, the land development regulations go on to specify a minimum amount of area that is to be preserved for any development. In general, that rule of thumb is 10%. However, if no natural vegetation is present, through development, they can, they, the developer, can plant native materials to basically establish that 10% criteria. And so what we wanted to do is give you an example of that. And so kind of to understand the limitations of clearing, there again, in the LDRs, is to, the comp plan says you cannot clear-cut property. And so the land development regulations go back and they say what areas on the site can be cleared. So in this case, it's generally building pads or lots, parking, roadways, areas where utilities will be located, and then stormwater retention areas. And so to provide a recent example, the Forest Trace subdivision, which is currently under construction off of Sisson Road, this is the site plan that was approved by staff. The area that you see there is the right-of-way. So again, that's an area that can be cleared based upon the land development regulations, all of the home lots, which there again, can be cleared per the LDRs, and then the stormwater retention system. And so all the, all of the areas in green here that you see are areas that are not to be touched, and that is to, A, meet the minimum standards of the land development regulations, and to provide some buffering from adjacent uses. And so then what we did, luckily, they took aerials right as this was being constructed. So what you can see here is the right-of-way has been cleared, the lots have been cleared, and the stormwater areas have been cleared. And so the areas that were meant to be left alone through the subdivision process have been indeed left alone. They haven't been touched. And so what we wanted to, we wanted to do this to illustrate that the land clearing that everyone is seeing as these subdivisions are being built is allowable within the land development regulations. It's not that we're saying the regulations are right or wrong. We just wanted to clarify that the regulations are being forced as they have been written. And just to give you an idea... And just to give you an idea, this example that I just used, the 10% of the site would have been 4.9 acres, the site's 49 acres. Overall, they, this development left approximately eight and a half acres of land that was untouched. So this actually goes a little bit above and beyond what the land development regulations require as a minimum. And so, again, this is a very high-level overview, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, or we can certainly do some research and get back to you if you would like.
Any questions? Member Jordan?
Okay, thanks, I appreciate the explanation. That graphic was graphic, to be honest with you. Just so I can understand, so if we go back to the first one, where you actually had the orange, that's the driveway portion, but first of all, we don't, do you have a picture of what it looked like before we started?
I don't have that, no. But basically, what you see is, let me go back to the end here, that property was, since it had never been developed before, it was just totally covered in natural vegetation.
Okay, so, okay, so, what I'm trying to understand is, when you say natural vegetation, so there are large trees in there, small trees in there, and?
Correct, basically, that was just native Florida scrub that you would see on undeveloped property.
Okay, so when a developer comes in, they bring the plan and say, this is what we want to do, you show them what the tree requirements are, correct?
Of course.
Okay, and what I think I heard you say is about 10% they're supposed to keep?
Correct.
Okay, and where did that requirement come from?
That comes from the city's land development regulations. So that's what any engineer would have to design the project to meet.
Okay, but where did the 10% come from? Why 10% versus 20% or 15%?
I can't answer that, but I can certainly do some research for you.
Okay. Alright, so what I'm hearing is the pad for the house, the driveway, and then of course the road is?
Stormwater.
And stormwater.
Correct.
All items that allows you to clear.
Correct.
Right.
And through development, we certainly encourage developers to save as much native vegetation as possible, even in those areas, not the roads, obviously, you have to be able to drive to those, but on the home lots, things like that, where vegetation can be accommodated, we certainly encourage that. But a lot of times, the requirements to meet the stormwater, which is required by St. John's River Water Management District, it requires a lot of grading on the sites, which therefore requires removal of the vegetation.
Okay, I've been back to back, I can't remember, is there a sidewalk? I don't know if there's a sidewalk or not.
There may not be throughout the whole development yet. Many times, they wait to install sidewalks until the homes are built, so that they don't get destroyed during the construction process. But eventually, when that subdivision's done, yes, there will be sidewalks along.
Okay, so if you have sidewalks, that's really boulevards, which means, aren't you required to put trees on some type of shrubs there?
That is correct. Each new home is required to have at least one boulevard tree, which is a tree placed between the sidewalk and the curb of the street.
And what size should that tree be?
It is typically a two-and-a-half-inch caliper, so that's measured at the very base of the tree, just above the root ball, and it's somewhere between 10 and 12 feet in height.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Member Stokel?
Thanks, Trevor, for the presentation. Just a couple clarifying questions. Do we know when these rules came into effect in the LDRs?
I don't know where, when they all became effective, but we can certainly get you a timeline, if you'd like.
Okay, and then if this minimum 10% preserved, is that regardless of if there's trees that are 20 inches in diameter or not?
That's applicable, yeah, so the 10% is not specific to just certain types of trees, it's just 10% native vegetation in general.
Okay, regardless?
Right.
Okay, if there are trees that are 20 inches or more in diameter, are they still fine just meeting the 10%? Or is that, do they have to do one of those three things in addition to the 10% at that point?
Correct, they would have to do something in addition to the 10%. So any tree above 20 inches that's removed has to be mitigated in some form. Many times, people, in this case, they use a combination, so sometimes developers will preserve a little extra over, above the 10%.
Okay, so that's maybe where they doubled their preservation, because if there were trees that were more than 20 inches?
Correct.
Okay, so that was one way?
Right.
Or the pain, or replanting certain things?
Basically, they can replant additional material. So like I said, each home is required to have one tree between the sidewalk and the street, they could double that to two, or they could put additional trees elsewhere on the site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you again for the report. I don't call myself a tree hugger, but certainly, I think like most of us, we're tree lovers, and anytime we have a development, that's certainly a concern, and the developers always get up there and tell us how they're going to do a great job with the wetlands and the highlands and all that stuff. I asked this at a seminar one time, you know, kind of give me a report on what that means exactly, highlands, wetlands, but where I'm going with this is, some of the trees in our area, the native trees in particular, are kind of unique. So my question to that is, are there any untouchables out there? Are there any species that you come across that it's like, we can't take that down?
Based on our regulations that are, as are currently written, we do not have that type of regulation in place.
I could really put you on the spot and say, should there be, but I'll pass on that.
All I can tell you in that regard is that there are other jurisdictions that do have, they call them a variety of things, but they do have specific trees that are not able to be removed.
Thank you. When you have a two-to-one mitigation, I'm reading here, the trees in excess of 20 inches are considered specimen trees, and they go two-to-one mitigation. Are the specimen trees the same tree, meaning that it's the same type of tree?
Typically, the larger trees that are taken out are often older oaks and things of that nature, and that's what we encourage to be replanted. The majority of the time, that's what it is, because they use a mix of planting additional canopy trees or overstory trees, and sometimes they will plant a larger number and a larger size to help reestablish that canopy. That's not always the case, but that is encouraged by staff.
I've heard some concerns about how easy it is perhaps to pay for mitigation. I guess I'd like to know a little more about when you pay for mitigation, what does that get us? Does that give us a specific two-for-one, or what does that do?
So the rate of payment is $100 per inch of tree lost, and so what that does, like I said, is go into the Public Landscape Trust Fund, which that money can be used to put trees back into publicly-owned properties. So whether it's rights-of-way or other publicly-owned properties, that money can be used to establish landscaping elsewhere.
So it's not required to be spent in the same area where it was being mitigated?
It is not.
I would like a little research on untouchables, for one thing. I feel like in our area, I am not the expert, but it just seems like there, you know, and when you mentioned that other areas do have untouchables, I'd like to have an idea of what we may have here, and I think some of the people out here may have some answers on that, that we ought to probably leave alone. And perhaps a little bit more on the pay for mitigation, why perhaps that mitigation is in the same area with which the tree was taken down, and I'd be interested to hear that. Thank you.
Ken Duke? Member Nelson?
Trevor, I'm sorry to do this to you.
Uh-oh.
When was the last time they changed that mitigation fee, the $100 an inch? Because that seems very, very low.
I don't think, I've been here for just under five years, it hasn't been changed since I've been here, since I've worked for the city, but I can certainly, we can certainly look into it, it'll be easy enough to find.
Well, the other thing I would sort of like us to look into is, my understanding is the county requirements are a lot more stringent than our requirements.
Okay.
And I don't know enough about it, but I would like to find out. I just, I hate to see the clear-cutting of all these trees, and especially the big trees.
Sure.
So if we can do something that's more in line with maybe what the county does?
Okay.
Anything else, member Jordan?
Yeah, just a couple more questions. Is there a gold standard for this?
Not off the top of my head, I can't, I can't name one for you.
Okay, but there are cities around the country that really are focused on trees and making sure that we maintain as many trees as possible.
Sure.
Going back to the boulevard trees, I've always been told that, you know, once the development is done, and they've got their CO and everything, there's nothing to stop anyone from just pulling the trees up and be done with it. Is that true?
So the boulevard trees are technically in the public right-of-way, they should not be removed unless they're causing some kind of, they're creating some kind of nuisance issue or something like that. And in that case, they would need to be basically permitted to be removed, so that we can make sure that the nuisance is being addressed. However, the code does specify that once a single-family home has been established for one year or more, that a permit is not required to remove trees off of that single-family lot.
Okay.
And so any other, commercial property is not operated that way, on a commercial property or industrial, you have to come in and pull a permit to remove a tree. But on single-family lots, once the home has been there for at least one year, you can remove trees from that property without permit.
Okay, and the other thing, and Vice Mayor Diesel actually kind of touched on it, because there are areas, not in this city, that says certain species can't be removed, who determines where those species are? Let's just assume we had some that we didn't want to have removed, how do you determine where they are?
So typically, sometimes it is regulated by species, and in the limited research I've done and related to this topic, it's not always just solely focused on species, sometimes it's more focused on the actual size of the tree, you know, the diameter of it, or sometimes the canopy of the tree. If it's a tree that provides a lot of shade, a lot of canopy, those have different regulations than other types or sizes of trees. And so, without getting into a lengthy discussion about it, it depends on how the overall regulations are written. Some places regulate just the size of the trunk, others regulate the overall canopy, and so that's why different types of trees are regulated differently in various municipalities.
Okay, I need to say this, just to make sure it's clear, you know, we're in the smart growth right now, and we need to make sure that we're not going to do anything to cause us to go backwards, we need to go forward, for sure.
Sure.
Which requires flexibility. But I think one of the concerns that I think all of us can concur with is that we want to maintain as many trees as we possibly can, if we possibly can.
Sure.
But we also need to be flexible with what we're doing. The clear-cutting of an area, and as I say, this graphic was a little scary, it was a lot for sure, but.
Sure.
I certainly would like to see, I think the rest of the council would like to see maybe some enhancements that we could do, and if you bring back some suggestions?
Of course.
That would be good, thank you.
And Robert, I think that's what I was suggesting, because I understand from Ms. Busaka, that the county regulations are a lot more stringent than ours, so maybe that's a starting point.
Sure, of course. We can start there.
Just a thought.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, anybody may speak on this subject, not at this point, because we don't usually do that, but during the last item on this, petitions and requests, not at this point, ma'am. We have one more. I'm just telling everybody, because I know not everybody got the word, and I was saying, well, why are we going, you're not being able to speak. So you will be able to speak after the next item.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, after the next two items, actually, and we'll further discuss it at that point. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Planning manager Brad Parish will present a new neighborhood, neighborhood center future land use designation from the draft Vision Based 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I think Brad turned into Trevor.
At least for right now. And so as, okay, as this is pulling up, yeah, in the recent few months, we've been doing some presentations to both the council here and to the Planning and Zoning Commission about the various elements of the new, the revised comprehensive plan that you will see very shortly, actually, your next, the first May meeting, we will be bringing that for, transmittal, just to allow the state to review that. But before we wanted to do that, we wanted to go through and basically talk about one of the revised land use plan categories. So those are the land use plan categories in the comprehensive plan are what generally regulates development. And the one that I'm going to be speaking to you a little bit about tonight is the neighborhood land use designation. And so again, just to summarize quickly, the 2040 comprehensive plan, we're looking at, you know, long-term out to 2040, what are our growth constraints, and where are some opportunities for redevelopment? Because we don't have a lot of area outside the city left to annex in. And so one of the things that we're focusing on through that, through that comprehensive plan is what's called placemaking, and again, those are policies to, that create a memorable and desirable environment for both residents and visitors. And so when we look at the current comprehensive plan, our current residential-only categories, we have five of those, they don't provide much in the way of guidance for character, they basically just regulate through different densities, which is important, but does leave some to be desired. And our current category names tend to create some confusion for developers, and sometimes staff, and the public, and so what we're trying to do is clarify that. And when I refer to character, the current comprehensive plan talks about things like public facilities, development patterns, compatibility, those are all things that you inherently are going to look at anyways. So we're trying to go above and beyond and allow some additional detail to be put in the comprehensive plan to help future amendments, and that would help the council, the staff, and the public, as they would have a better understanding of what is expected in terms of an actual neighborhood. And so we felt that the best way to illustrate this was through images, and so, these are some examples, this is a development that was done under our high-density residential land use, it allows 15 units an acre, but at the same time, you can also have something like this three-story apartment building. Both of those are easily allowable under the high-density residential land use, but when you start talking about compatibility, each one of those development types are compatible with different types of surrounding development. Same thing here with medium-density residential, you have, you can have single-family homes in medium-density, but you can also have townhomes, which is the picture there that you have illustrated on the right. And actually, that picture on the right, if you turn the camera 180 degrees, there are single-family homes across the street from that. And so we felt that by providing this character, it would help, and here again, we have medium-density on the left, low-density on the right, single-family homes, basically on the same-sized lot, and actually, these two homes are right next door to each other. And so, just driving down the street, you would never know from a zoning or regulation standpoint that they were really treated any differently, because they look so similar, but that's what, that's what our current comprehensive plan has created. And so what we're proposing to do is put all of these neighborhoods into one land use category, that there again, talks about character and provides guidance on the style and type of what housing, those sorts of things should be included. And then we're going, we're proposing to freeze the density based on the current land use on the property. So what that means is if you have, if you're allowed five units per acre on your property today, if this is adopted, you would continue to have five units per acre on your property. But there again, the benefit of that is you would have the additional level of character description in the comprehensive plan to help guide development as it moves forward into the future. And so really, the main priority, when you read through the excerpt which was provided as part of this agenda item, is to protect the existing development patterns throughout the established neighborhoods in the city, and provide guidance for those new neighborhoods that are being developed. And it also encourages the introduction of what's called middle, missing-middle housing, which are those things such as duplexes, or small apartment buildings, or even townhomes. Right now, we have a lot of detached single-family going on, those are the typical, you know, single-family subdivisions, and we have, what in this image is more or less mid-rise, which are the kind of three-story garden-style apartments going on. But there's very little in-between that's happening, and that, that's quickly becoming a desirable housing choice for a variety of different generations, but right now, it's difficult to build that sort of missing-middle housing within the city, and that's just based on our current regulations, that's not anything environmental related to the city. And so what we, what we wanted to do is provide an example of what we're kind of talking about. So this is a screenshot from the Brevard County Property Appraiser of La Ceda. And so within this neighborhood, which is a little over 500 feet of this street that we picked, you have a single-family home on a lot that's about a third of an acre, you have a six-unit condo building there that's on a lot not much bigger than the single-family home, you have six townhomes, each on small individual lots, what's called a patio home, which is basically a single-family home that's on a narrow 40 or 50-foot wide lot. And so we wanted to illustrate this, because a lot of times when you talk about missing-middle housing, allowing, you know, a duplex to go next to a single-family home, it causes a lot of concern. But when it's done properly, and it's under the correct regulations, it really can create a very, a very good neighborhood. It's very common for us to, people mention La Ceda as one of the desirable areas of the city, and so we wanted to at least begin this conversation, which would be allowed by the comprehensive plan, and then would have to be much more detailed in the land development regulations to make sure that this type of infill development is appropriate and it's controlled. And so here again, just to reiterate, we're taking these, these five single-family zone, or five residential-only zoning districts, sorry, land use districts, and converting them into one neighborhood land use. them into one neighborhood land use with the density map that accompanies it, to keep the density the way it is. And so, the areas that you see on the map there that are in yellow, that would be the neighborhood land use. So as you can tell, that's more or less the majority of the established single-family, and even some of the multifamily areas within the city. So keeping those protected, guiding new development, that's really what we're, what we're going for with the neighborhood land use. And just very quickly, the small, kind of lighter purple areas in the middle of that map, kind of at the major, or the intersections of some of our collector pathways, such as Barna and Harrison, or Barna and Knox-McCray, we're proposing what's called a neighborhood center. And so, what we're seeing is those large commercial centers that were popular, you know, in the '60s through the, even up until early 2000s, are not performing as well as they could. We've been approached by some of the property owners that are looking for options as to how they can redevelop those properties to make them more profitable, or even just to be able to sell those. And so, one option that we've seen a lot of other places doing is allow residential to be put back in there. There's a lot of commercial that maybe is too much for everyone that lives right there, but by allowing some additional residential to go in there, that helps, A, get more housing within the city, and B, it puts customers much closer to those commercial businesses that are currently struggling. And so, that's what, that's what we're proposing as part of the neighborhood center. And that was based on the input that we received through the visioning exercise, where people wanted options on being able to walk to a little coffee shop in the morning, or walk to a corner store, you know, that they'll always still take their car and maybe do their weekly grocery shopping, but they would like that option that through the week, to be able to have something close by that they can get to. And that's it on that. I'll be happy to take any questions, try and give you answers that we have, or get back to you with more information.
Members, Jordan?
Thank you. Great presentation, for sure. And of course, I like it when we reduce all this stuff, and nobody can understand anyhow except you guys, for sure.
We appreciate reducing it, too.
I really like the concept of the missing-middle housing. Have we had anyone to come before us and ask to do something like that?
I can't think of a, of a recent example, no. And I think it's because a lot of times, it's, we don't have clear, a clear process outlined for it, and I think that somewhat discourages some small-scale developers. You'll still get people come in and propose to do townhouses and that sort of thing, but not on the kind of fine-grained detail that a lot of missing-middle housing really thrives on.
Okay. Does this, I'm going back to the other subject on, on trees. When you do middle housing, is that helpful?
A lot of times, missing-middle housing is good to put in established areas. So where there's lots that have been skipped over, or old, you know, apartments or homes that have been torn down, it's good to infill on those with missing middle. So instead of going out and clearing a raw piece of land that's never been developed, you're actually putting something back on.
Okay.
Property that was previously developed. And so, it can have that effect of reducing the amount of property that is clear to accommodate development.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Members, Stockholm?
Thank you again, Trevor, for the presentation. Okay, so if the, you said the density is staying the same?
Correct.
So what would, what's the benefit, I guess, of going down to one, if we're keeping the same density?
So, right now, basically, having the, all the different future land use districts, but only, the only difference, really discernible difference between them is the density, is it creates a lot of confusion for people in that it almost gives a false sense of, of what the development typology is. In one of the first slides that I showed, the image is up there. So, for instance, both of those developments were done in what's called high-density residential, although a duplex isn't necessarily considered high-density. Those are typically much smaller. They can fit within a neighborhood much better than a larger three-story apartment building. And so, it's difficult, when we're going through land use changes and things like that, to really get everyone to understand what the true differences are between those, because you can accommodate such the wide variety of different types of development in there.
Right.
And so, what we're trying to do is leave the density alone, and keep that as a, as a tool to control where growth goes within the city, and then replace all the very minor character.
Like setbacks, or like what are the?
So setbacks are in the LDR, so it wouldn't be controlling that.
Okay.
It would just be defining where, where high-density, actually what that is, and where it's appropriate. So maybe along the corridors, or those sorts of things are near the corridors, maybe that's where truly apartments are more appropriate. Whereas, in the middle of an established neighborhood that has had some decline and is trying to be revitalized, that's maybe where you can accommodate some smaller multifamily. And so, that's what we're trying to get at with this.
So if we had this neighborhood, for instance, for our recent Park Avenue subdivision, would we have had all those issues of going back and forth? Or would it have just been, oh, it's all neighborhood, it doesn't matter if it's R-1B or PD at that point?
So in that case, I, from a land use perspective, I don't think we would have had to do a change there, per se, because the allowable density, in that case, was fine. So the, the discussion would have been more focused on the actual design of the neighborhood itself, rather than, is this an appropriate land use, or is it not?
Because it's all grouped in that one neighborhood.
Right. Because I don't think anyone was arguing that single-family was wrong in that case.
Correct.
They were more concerned about.
It was the lot sizes, it was the.
And so, that's, that's controlled more so at the zoning standpoint, so long as the overall goals of the neighborhood are met.
Okay. And then, on this missing-middle slide.
Mm-hmm.
Missing-middle housing. Okay, wouldn't detached single-family homes be in that category as well with neighborhoods?
Sure, of course.
Okay. So you don't think it's grouping too much into one?
From a land use perspective, I don't think so, because basically, it's leaving all residential under one category. You can certainly have controls underneath that through the density, which will continue to be a tool. And then, further in that, you can have, through the land development regulations, which are kind of the more fine-grained detail.
Okay.
Regulations, where that's truly appropriate.
So you're just seeing this, because I'm all for the efficiency, I just want to make sure we protect ourselves as a city as well.
Absolutely.
For what we're wanting. So you're just, I guess, we're seeing this as where we want people living, essentially?
Right. And what we, what we're kind of envisioning with this is that it's probably not necessary every time someone wants to come in and do just a slightly different type of residential development to change the comprehensive plan to accommodate it, but maybe only to require a zoning change. So there's still that element of public input. It still comes before the city council to make that final determination as to, is this appropriate to allow this new kind of development in a specific area? And so, we're just taking out the step of the comprehensive plan amendment, because it's rare that we ever get a lot of pushback on one type of residential from a land use perspective.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other cards on, I don't hear the cards anymore. Members want to speak?
For the record, I'd like to read the letters of appreciation that were received from the following employees. Steve Adams, our building official, Paul Bollington, building plans manager, Tracy Davis, a clerical assistant, Darcy Floss, a development specialist, Terry Franklin, neighborhood services director, Tish Hood, development specialist, and Rose Coney, a program specialist.
Microphones? Yep. I'd like to talk about petitions and requests, so you all understand what the protocol is. You each will have three minutes to speak. No speaker cards are necessary. Please move forward as the seats become vacant. If you move forward, I'll pick from that area for the next person to speak. That way, we won't have people trying to get from the back to the front. And please not, don't be too repetitive if you, if you can't with, you know, hearing the same thing over and over isn't accomplishing much, and takes, takes up a lot of time. So if you can do that, we'd appreciate it. Who would like to be the first person? And, ma'am, come right up. Again, if some of you will either come forward, or... Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Mary Murray. I live at 1765 Lakeside Drive here in Titusville.
Let me, let me just say one more thing. You'll have a green light, then you'll have a yellow light when it's 30 seconds, and red light means it's over.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. I'm here in regard to the trees. I spoke briefly with the planning commission before, and I wanted to make just a couple quick points. I have to leave to go back to a legal women voters' solar co-op that we're having at Parrish Medical Center tonight. I came here in November from the state of Minnesota, in a community that had similar situations, and saw a very solid gold standard, which was originally derived from the Urban Watershed Forestry Manual you were asking earlier. They have a great set of standards in regard to not only what should not be removed, but how quickly to repopulate the canopy. Selective clearing was also put into place in Minnesota, which meant you could not clearcut. Certain species were protected, and especially certain trees of a certain diameter. An oak tree, once removed, takes 30 years to reach the point at which it will reproduce acorns. So by placing that small tree, we have to wait 30 years for it to be able to mature. That mature tree will remove 48 pounds of carbon dioxide every year. So when we lose our major canopy, we increase the carbon dioxide in our community, along with our traffic that we talked about getting more intense. That tree normally lives up to 250 years. So, not knowing how long they've been here, but they have a wealth of time for them to still provide that. Selective clearing allowed for foliage, protection of the water, wildlife habitat, air quality, and then also erosion prevention, which is often an issue during the periods of time in which clearcutting has occurred, especially if a development is delayed. In the, in the state of Minnesota, we were ringed by other cities, so we had to then redevelop back into neighborhoods that again, had that large-growth tree pattern, and a very unique watershed. So in looking for those gold standards, I think there is a few out there, one being the city of St. Louis Park in Minnesota, that you go to set some of those standards in place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kay Saint Ange, and I live at 2360 Maryland. First off, I want to thank you for the tree preservation presentation that was presented, and for you voicing your concerns about clearcutting in residence, for residential development. But I feel a great sense of urgency in regards to this, because there is a likelihood that over 1,400 wooded acres will be clearcut and bulldozed by developers to build approximately 5,000 residential housing units that are proposed at this time. And unless the laws are changed, this will go on indefinitely. So there is a great urgency. I want to read to you right now a petition that has been signed by 279 people, and it is a petition entitled, "2019 Petition to the Titusville City Council Requesting New Tree Preservation Regulations. We, the undersigned, are concerned that hundreds of wooded acreages in the city of Titusville are set to be clearcut for proposed housing developments. Several developers have recently clearcut large wooded acreages for development. We understand that at least 13 developments on large wooded acreages are proposed at this time, and that the developers will likely clearcut these acreages unless the city restricts the developers from doing so. The wooded acreages of Titusville are a natural resource treasure in Brevard County. Once cut, they will never be the same again. Large trees and urban forestry in neighborhoods provides countless benefits, including reduction in temperature, electrical usage, improvement in air quality, aesthetic beauty to neighborhoods, reduction in noise and pollutants, reduction in stormwater runoff, and they provide habitat for human, for wildlife. Tree-lined neighborhood streets encourage walking and bicycling and mission vision of Titusville. Existing Titusville municipal codes and land development regulations do not adequately provide city planners the tools to require or incentivize developers to build without clearcutting. Housing developments can and should include existing large canopy trees and wooded areas in neighborhoods being developed. Cutting down ancient oak trees cannot be mitigated with a sapling or two. We, the undersigned, urge the Titusville City Council to authorize the city planners to write new codes and regulations, or strengthen existing codes and regulations, to protect and preserve wooded acreages from clearcutting during development, and to encourage developers to build among existing trees. Titusville Space Coast Industry..." Okay, that's fine.
Your time is up, ma'am. If you'd like to finish this sentence, go ahead, please.
Okay. What I would like to do is ask those who are concerned with clearcutting to please stand Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Name and, and address, name and address, please, for the record.
Laurine Ruth, 7185 Bright Avenue in Port St. John. I have a resolution from the Enchanted Forest Sanctuary Board of Directors. We, the undersigned, being all the directors of the Enchanted Forest Sanctuary, agree that the following resolution made on 4/13/19 at 1:30 p.m. at the Enchanted Forest Sanctuary, we do by hereby unanimously concur with the 2019 petition to the Titusville City Council requesting new tree preservation regulations, which urges the Titusville City Council to authorize the city planners to write new codes and regulations to protect and preserve wooded acreages from clearcutting during development, and to encourage developers to build among existing trees. And this was signed by all four of the board of directors of the Enchanted Forest.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Pam Derschka. And actually, my address is really why I, I wasn't even going to come up, but I live at, across the street, in Arbor Ridge, across the street from the development that was used here as the example. And the amazing, what you saw in the display was exactly what we felt, living across the street from this development. One of our people that live in our homeowner association has a drone, and would take videos, and we would see the bulldozers, and it really seemed to us like they were clearcutting. It didn't seem like there were very many acres that were left untouched. So the example was, was very good. We also, there were two things that I noticed also. I saw the gopher tortoises coming down through a swell that's just behind our home. And I saw that one gopher tortoise in the road that had gotten hit, and I just wonder how many were left there. As I understood, they were required to move them, but then the project was delayed for a number of years. So many of them had, had gone back and had homes, and they were not required to move them at that point. I also saw, next door in San Mateo, I saw, I was trying to walk the sidewalks there, and I couldn't even walk on the sidewalks some days after there had been rain, because of the, the way the water was flowing off of that property onto the neighboring property. So I really appreciate what Kay has started with letting us know about some of these issues that are going on, and I hope that you address it. I appreciate the response that we've heard so far. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Desiree Hunt. I live in Central Park, right across from the Park Avenue subdivision they're trying to put in. My husband and I, we are 28 and 30, and they're saying that the generations are looking for high-density and smaller houses to live in, and we chose our spot just because we had space, and that we had neighbors that we can actually get to know, and that we didn't have houses that were in the middle of no trees. Like, so that we can actually have the vegetation, the birds, you can listen to wind rustling in the trees, instead of horns and honking and people. So that's why we decided to live there, instead of all the other houses that are up for sale right now. So, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Next, please.
Laurine Flanagan, 967 Tennessee Street. I wanted to just say that I appreciate the presentations here, and all the comments of the city council, of your concern for this. I know that there is an issue that we have to all look at, the fact that a builder does have to put the utilities there, that we have to have the stormwater drainage, we understand that. But perhaps the thing we're not, we're forgetting about is the lack of trees in neighborhoods decrease the quality of life for the new homeowner. neighborhoods decrease the quality of life for the new homeowners and the adjacent neighborhoods. Our children and grandchildren want to live here because it is family-friendly, and the beauty of nature, water, ocean with our forests in Titusville is very, very attractive to people. The mission statement of the city council ends with, "To improve the quality of life of our community," and I do feel that the city council has that commitment, and when so many projects come before you, there's so many hard decisions to make. Titusville, in honesty, has plenty of land for sale. We have a lot of land, we drive around South Street, Dairy, Route One, Singleton, there's signs everywhere, "Land for Sale." We need to decrease the amount of apartments and homes allowed per acre, as you were discussing. That is what the community wants, outside of the downtown area where we want to increase the apartments there for the convenience of combination of living and commercial. We need to accommodate natural trees and palms and have the space in developments for, I believe, tree parks, so people could actually use that area. We would still have the trees, we would have the canopies, it could be used for the residents of that particular neighborhood. We also need to increase the current land buffer from the two areas. As Brad was showing, he was having single-family, he was having a duplex, he was having apartments, and he was having a high-rise. So I feel that those areas, yes, can be near each other, but can we increase by ordinance the land buffer to give us approximately eighty feet? So we have a little bit of a buffer there, you can still put your stormwater drainage tubing through, you can put utilities through that area. With eighty feet, you can put trees, and all of us know we can go to a nursery and get a tree that is fifteen to twenty feet high with a beautiful canopy from a professional nursery, and this will help transition the zoning between these land areas if we all want to live happily ever after. I want us to, as for residential developments, I feel like those kind of situations with enough decrease in the number of homes, decrease in the number of apartments per acre, increasing the land buffer will give us coexistence with trees and people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Paul Slube. I've lived around, I've lived in Titusville like about fifty years, so I've really gotten into the plants and wildlife and everything and tried to learn a lot about it, and of course, I'll have to say that trees are just incredibly valuable. Unfortunately, a lot of times, just by the nature of where the development goes, we want to build in the higher, well-drained, sandy areas. A lot of times, those areas, the sort of trees that grow there aren't going to be the bigger oaks, you know, like laurel oaks don't grow so big, they don't live quite as long. A lot of times, they're going to be things like that, palmettos, you know, that while extremely valuable in the landscape for the wildlife and everything, is not going to get much protection. But, you know, I'm all for any kind of mitigation for saving any of the native big trees in any way. Beyond that, anything you can do to encourage keeping or planting, if you're replanting, to replant native, always native, because all trees aren't equal, you know, so many come from all different parts of the world, and they don't provide for the bird life and everything else nearly the same, you know. So any of the regulations, you can keep the native stuff around or in replanting. But these, one other quick point is the areas that were mainly the green, you know, that they were saying remains untouched, that's a great idea, but not always as good as it looks and sounds, because so often, within the next year, two, three, and certainly by five or ten years, what these strips often, not real big areas, but they so often get whittled down, you know, and what landscapers come around the edges, little by little, they cut in more and more, you know, maybe leaving the larger pines and whatnot, but nobody, so many people don't have a respect or really like that, the lower messy stuff, you know. Anyway, so for instance, around Walmart property, hardly anybody really remembers like what it looked like ten or fifteen years ago, you know, much more native wildlife, and so this slips from the public eye once the development is in there, you know, and then eyes are off little by little. People don't remember what it even used to look like and the native vegetation, you know, that was there. But just, you know, if you want to model Titusville as some of the beautiful places like Winter Park or Ormond by the Sea, you can see as you go through those areas how they value their native vegetation, their native big trees, you know. So do everything you can to keep that stuff around.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Spar, eight-twenty-five Clifton Cove Court, Coco, and I'm speaking for Sierra Club Turtle Coast Group. I'll get right to the point. We want you to authorize the next step towards revising the tree protection ordinance tonight. When you see the weaknesses in the way your tree preservation ordinance is operating, it's time to strengthen it. In particular, we need more protection for large specimen trees. We also need a requirement for canopy, which your ordinance does not have. It has a requirement for vegetation, but not specifically canopy. And finally, the provision in your ordinance that applicants can pay into the Public Landscaping Trust Fund and then clear cut needs to be tightened, so that this will not be the usual way of doing business for residential subdivisions. I understand that the next step you need to take is to ask that the advisability of ordinance revisions be placed on future agenda for discussion. Tonight, please ask for a staff report on advisability and options for revising the ordinance. A definite date for this report to be considered by council should be set, and the date should be as soon as possible. Sierra Club is concerned about how long it might take to revise the tree protection code. We ask that you request some estimate of the time involved to be included in staff's advisability report. That way, you can decide if additional action should be considered. In conclusion, please ask that an advisability report and options for modifying the ordinance be placed on the council agenda at a definite date as soon as possible, and also ask staff to provide a rough estimate of the time to complete the draft revisions. We all want Titusville to remain a beautiful city with many trees, so please take the next step for tree preservation tonight. The time for action is now.
Good evening. Michael Majak, Alpine Lane, Titusville. It's kind of hard to step up behind Mary sometimes. She's an excellent speaker. I know in talking with Kay and others, it gave me some pause for reflection. I know as a member of the Environmental Commission, we've often questioned why we never see these planned unit developments come before the Environmental Commission. Why is it that we never got a chance to say, "Sure, you can clear the house pad, but not the whole lot"? That would go a long way to saving tree canopy, which is something that we've been trying to do for years, is to restore the tree canopy in Titusville. One day, you realize you're not alone. You're not one being. You're part of the community, and the community is you. So we ask ourselves, what kind of community do we want to live in? To answer the question, we hold vision statement workshops. We hold comprehensive plan workshops I've attended too. We've held short series recently on resilient Titusville, more workshops, more input from the community. The purpose of these workshops is to address and document what the community wants. We become the community, and that community we live in is defined by the choices we make. Clearly, we're not powerless. When we see a wrong, we stand up here and we try to do something about it. So the opportunity is before us to begin the process to amend our building codes, to follow our vision statement, and to follow what we've written in our comprehensive plan, that there should be no clear cutting. It is, after all, what we, the community, have said we want. Thank you.
I had a speaking card for this and also want to speak at... We don't need a speaking card, as I said, sir, but name and address for the record, please.
Stan Johnston, eight-sixty Point Set Avenue. I had a speaking card for tree preservation and mitigation regulations and for the item four-D, which I thought was to be accepted by the council.
Our protocols do not have that, sir. We never do.
Okay. So how many minutes do I get? Because I had a trees preservation, and I wanted to speak for petitions and requests on another item.
Sir, we don't allow speakers to come up for those items. You can speak under petitions and requests, and you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Stan Johnston, eight-sixty Point Set Avenue. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight, and I think you know why I'm here, because you don't return, my phone calls are not returned, and neither are my emails. For, and I've been doing this constantly, probably about forty phone calls in the last, since February twelfth. February twelfth is when I, when there was a exclamation that, to me, is that the city spent seventy thousand dollars to an independent engineering organization to review my, Stan Johnston's correspondence from two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, by, paid to an independent engineering organization that disproved about everything I've been saying. This, of course, is outrageous. I've made three formal requests to the city, and there's no such thing as this, there's no contract, there's no report. So considering that the city manager supported these statements then and after February twelfth, I'm asking for the resignation of Scott LaReese, and if you don't resign him, I'm asking for him to be fired by you because this is deception, dishonesty, malice towards me and my clients, including my family, homeowners of Baker's subdivision, Parkland States, and Bay Meadows subdivision. And this is not a good thing, and I'm doing this seriously, and I believe that it's a good thing, it can be positive. Mr. LaReese needs to admit to himself and others of his dishonesty and to seek reconciliation. I see our city manager, Mr. LaReese, as just another out-of-town con man and shyster. He's no fool. However, I see today's council members as one of three possibilities. I mean, to accept this, I mean, it's a slam on to me, it's a slam to homeowners, and I've been fooled. I've been fooled by him, I've been fooled by none of your engineers, and it's gotten down to the point where city council should take action instead of ignoring my phone calls, ignoring my emails, and just denying and ignoring the problem. So...
Your time is up, sir.
May I have more time, please?
No, sir.
If I may just make a comment, Mr. Johnston has been saying this sort of thing since two thousand and fourteen, I think, and we have books of information that was given to him and emails from him. We've had many, many meetings with him. We finally decided, each of us individually, that we will give him whatever public records he asks for, but we will no longer spend either our time, the city's time, or your time going over the same things again and again and again. So thank you for your patience this evening. Sir, name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Buchanan. My address is fifty fifteen River Edge Drive, Titusville, Florida. I'm going to speak very briefly, much less than the three minutes. I've had the opportunity to review your tree ordinance. It includes all the same tools that the other cities in the county has. It's substantially exactly the same. It has the same tools that City of Melbourne uses, City of West Melbourne, City of Palm Bay. All those tools are there for the staff. I would recommend that you don't change your code. If there is a problem with the development and clear cutting, it's not a code problem, it's an enforcement problem. There's nothing wrong with your code. If there's a problem with developers, with trees being removed that weren't supposed to be removed, it's an enforcement problem. There's nothing wrong with your code. What I, as a city council, you have the ability to affect that, you control the budget. If you have an enforcement problem, whether it's in planning or police or anywhere else, you simply, at the next budget cycle, put the resources towards that department so they can fund whatever position is necessary, whatever hours are necessary, and achieve the enforcement of your code that's already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers, sir?
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Newman. I'm here as the co-chair of the Brevard County Green Party, as well as owner-operator of the Kind Trim Tree and Landscape Services. I'm an arborist, and trees are my passion, so I had to be here to speak today. So made some notes during the meeting, I just want to go down the list, and sorry for the choppiness of it, but I'll try to string it together as best I can. I really appreciate your question about the gold standard, and I'd like to speak about that because this guy's saying your regulations are... Okay, I won't speak about anyone else, but I think we're all in agreement that the standards could be upgraded. They're not even up to county regulations, and we're looking to change that across the county, all the municipalities. So in my mind, part of the gold standard is, instead of developers coming in and saying, "Well, I've got this plan for this community, and we're going to do it right here," they go in and assess the property first and foremost, because property's there, there's inhabitants of that property, not to mention all the trees we're talking about. So in my mind, they go in first thing foremost, and it's non-native invasive mitigation. That'll clear out a lot of it to begin with. You go through that property, you get rid of all the non-native invasive species, and then you open that property up a lot already, and you can get more of a sense of where you can put houses, you know, without, with minimal damage to the landscape that exists. You know, developers like to come in, you know, we're all proud of our assembly line sort of industrial heritage that the Henry Fords and whatnot have brought great wealth to our country, and, you know, developers are kind of taking that same tack, just clear it all and give us a clean slate to work with, we're going to put a bunch of houses in. The diagrams of the communities they were showing, it kind of reminded me of one of my favorite shows back in the day, I think it was on HBO, I think it was called Weeds or something, California-based show, you know, and it starts off with this really cute song about the tiki-taki houses, and it shows them going up and all the people just the same in their little tiki-taki houses and these little cookie cutter postage stamp-sized lots with their house and their Saint Augustine grass and, you know, monocultures. They just want to come in, plant a bunch of exotics and monocultures that require a lot of fertilizer and extraneous water, and we want to preserve our environment here and, you know, use native landscaping and work with the native landscaping that already exists, and like the other person said, you don't have to clear the whole thing. the other person said, you don't have to clear the whole thing, clear where the house is going--
Sir, your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I see no one getting up, last chance, okay. Did I miss your--
No, sir, no, sir, I, well, I'm past, but yeah, I'm going to talk now. I'm up.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just thought it was a good time to wait. I do think that, and somebody noted the number out there, I'm not sure I knew it was that exactly, but with 14,000 acres being developed now, or coming up soon, I think it's a good time to, to take a look at the tree ordinances. I think that somebody used the term, you know, let's look at them, let's clean them up. I think Member Nelson talked about the county tree ordinances, and we looked over to you, Trevor, and said, maybe we can start there. My first question, you know, and it was just really a question in my, my head, was, do we have any untouchables? And I think that there's a group of people out there that feel like there probably are some untouchables. I kind of took to the line a little bit, that it's 30 years to, to grow an oak tree to full growth, and the mitigation of a couple saplings might not get it done, at least 30 years. I'm not thinking I'm going to see that. I'm an optimist, but not this time. That being said, I also think that Member Jordan made a good point, we got a good role going here, the citizens of Titusville are pretty excited about an awful lot of condemned former areas of dilapidation are now alive and well and looking great. In most of those cases, we simply were able to use the areas that were already there and redeveloped. I think redevelopment's going to be a key to us as we go forward. I heard a developer recently say, there's, there's not a lot of areas to develop anymore because, in Titusville, because of the wetlands and the highlands and all that go with that, so I think redevelopment's going to be a key. But I do like the idea, and I hope, Trevor, you sense this as well, and I will request it if it's not beneficial, I would like a, a presentation on, you know, some possibilities that staff would think would be good to tighten some things up, some input from citizens that you've just heard, and again, some untouchables, some gold standard, and maybe base it starting off with the counties.
I'm going to jump in here. From what I've heard this evening, I think it would be proper for us to ask staff to do a complete advisability, not only the individual things that have been asked for, but relook at our, our building codes and regulations, and see how they can be improved environmentally. So after you speak, the rest of the council, I would ask that for a motion of that type. You're next, sir.
I was just going to say, I would be very interested, as part of that presentation, learning more about the gold standard and the untouchables. And then my next question is one Mary had. Approximately, what is the timeframe, what would be the timeframe, or something like that?
If I can comment, we don't know exactly what their workload is, so let's ask Ms. Lusaka, when we make the motion, as to suggest how long it would take--
Okay.
--to come back. They're very busy, and we certainly want to--
She looks like she's going to--
--done as soon as possible.
She looks, she looks like she's coming.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Ms. Lusaka.
I've had the pleasure of doing this twice in my life, and--
You practiced.
Yes, ma'am. The staff time is short, the public time is usually quite long. The first time I did it, it took two years to get through the public process--
Ooh.
--and the second time I did this, the public process had been going on so long that the, my boss took the shrapnel from the process, put it in a Ziploc bag, and handed it to me, and told me to fix it. So that took another six months or so. We, I would be delighted to have staff let you know exactly, after we've looked at all those other things that we're doing for you, to let you know, but I want to warn you that landscaping, in my opinion, is the last bastion of property rights. People say, I'm willing to do this, this, and this, but when you tell me what I can plant on my property, it gets very personal. So we would be, I'd be delighted to bring back to you our best estimate of how long it would take staff, and then, when it comes to the public process, the sky's the limit.
I'll bet her off. Okay.
You're next, sir.
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Where are you going?
I was hoping back to my chair.
Not yet, not that easy. Stay right there. Just need to understand, when you say the public process is very long, explain that to me, I'm not sure--
Well, the people that you're speaking to now are very pro-regulation. There's a lot of people out there who own the property, or plan on developing the property, that will see it differently. And once we have a regulation to, for people to debate, then you will get to hear both sides of that.
I guess what I don't understand is, we have a process for many things here, so it sounds to me like this one is longer than other processes we have, so, just trying to understand.
But, it's been, that's been my experience, and in both cases that I went through this, ultimately, the elected officials asked, they actually set up committees with people from various interests, so that they could work out as many compromises as they could in a easier, informal discussion, as opposed to hour-long, many hour-long debates at the public. And, I'll just give you one example, what we're talking about here is largely residential, and so, for instance, we, there was a concern about some clear cutting that had happened on one project, and that was partly, at least, because the project was, had floodplain issues, and we require that a property for residential, or any development, be put to a certain elevation in order to continue to remain in the floodplain, in the federal flood insurance program. There are no options to the minimum height at which that may go. Once you have filled that much property, the idea of maintaining trees becomes either very difficult or very expensive. So there are lots and lots of technical reasons why people come in and remove that, and so you have to balance the, the positive things that trees bring, which have been brought to you very well by these people, and the technical ways in which development occurs.
Well, one of the things, when I was, had the pleasure of talking to, where's Maureen? Maureen, and Mary, and one other, Kay?
Kay.
Kay, there you are. I was very clear, I said, you know, we need to make sure that we're flexible with our requirements, for sure, because developers do have rights, and it's kind of interesting, when it doesn't touch you, then you want all these regulations, but once it touches you, you say, why are there all these regulations here? I just want to make sure that, you know, we, of course, maintain as many trees as possible, but also understand that the developer or homeowner has rights themselves. So I'm not looking for a long process. A word that came out was enforcement. Maybe we have a problem with enforcement, I don't know, you know, I've heard that before. If we just enforce what we have on the books now, I think that's, if Trevor, you can bring that back, and, and I'm not saying we don't have enforcement, I just need to understand if, if there is an enforcement problem, but I really don't want to go through a very long process. I think I understand, and I think the council understands exactly what all these people want, and I think we want the same thing, but we also want to make sure that we don't stifle what we have here. We're very blessed to have developers who want to come into our community, but we also want a certain character in our community, and I think we all understand that. So, not looking for a long, drawn-out plan, and who was it, Mary? Is that Mary Key? Mary, that one, she wants something now, and I want to give Mary something now, but, but I don't want, you know, I just don't want it to be a long, drawn-out process, for sure, so, thank you, sir.
A couple of comments, I, I don't think we're talking, and correct me, about after the home is, is sold and up, and regulating what the individual homeowner is going to put on it, we're more talking about the projects, and what, what can be saved, if you will, in the way of trees, that maybe we haven't looked at before, so it's more confined than, it's not just, to me, and we'll make it part of the motion when, and see how it all flies, but, so that may make the time a little bit less, and maybe the conversations a little bit less, because you're absolutely right, when a person owns the property, they, they have rights to do what they want with that property, and I wouldn't have it any other way, I mean, within, within bounds, certainly, there are regulations to keep people from impeding or doing something to disturb their neighbors and so forth, that's, that's, that's there. So with that, we have Member Nelson.
The only other thing I was going to say is, if Trevor, if you could let us know how old those mitigation fees are, because that just, that sounds really low, like maybe it's been there for the last 15, 20 years.
I see, yes, I see no other lights, but you certainly, if you would like to make a motion, I would be--
We're going to try this, okay. Do you want to try?
No.
Okay.
Not me.
My motion would be to have staff come back, look at the Preservation and Mitigation Regulations regarding our tree preservation, and come back with a plan of how to maybe strengthen them, and also to turn around and, and give us what county regulations are, so we can sort of have a, compare them, and the blue ribbon regulations. Did I leave anything out?
Gold standard.
Gold standard, gold standard, something like that.
Well, yeah, those items have already been put forth, now we're talking about a broader scope. Each, each individual items that the council people have brought up would be something that we've got as well. Okay, I have a motion.
Second. I'll give it to her, I'll give it to her.
Member Soffel has seconded it. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
With that, does council have anything else they would like to speak for the good of the order?
Go home, Mary.
No, you can't. With that, I will adjourn this meeting, but we will meet at 7:25.
All right.
Again, reconvene.